For March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have two items, items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the two thousand and twenty-three Colorado Legislative Session Update. And item number two is a proposed urban renewal plan area southwest corner of I seventy and Wattsworth Boulevard. And we'll start our meeting as we usually do with public comment. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak at tonight's meeting, you may speak on either of the agenda items, one or two. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you're here in the hall and would like to speak, you may do so now by coming to the podium. And if you are joining us online, you may raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I'll check with our clerk to see if we have anybody with their hand raised.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I don't see anyone coming in to speak under public comments, so we will go to agenda item number one. This is a two thousand and twenty-three Colorado Legislative Update. And we're very pleased to have representatives from CML here and have our, it's not the congressional delegation, what do you call the, the state legislative delegation? So we're pleased to have Jesse Danielson here, the senator from, from our district in Colorado. And Senator Danielson, please help me welcome just Senator Danielson. She is a Democratic member of this house district, or Senate District Twenty-two. She was voted into the Senate in two thousand and eighteen to District Twenty, and after running for election in two thousand and twenty-two, was elected to District Twenty-two after redistricting, I believe. And Senator Danielson currently serves on the Business Labor and Technology Committee as vice chair and has sponsored bills and resolutions such as increasing minimum age to purchase firearms, ensure equal pay for equal work, and improve the Health Care Access for Older Coloradans Act. So thank you very much for being here. And we expect to be joined by Representative Monica Duran. Representative Duran is a Democratic member of the House of Representatives from District Twenty-four. She served on city council right here with us since Wheat Ridge from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. And Representative Duran was voted into the House of Representatives in two thousand and twenty after running for reelection in two thousand and twenty-two, was elected to House District Twenty-three, once again after redistricting. Representative Duran is serving on the Executive Committee of the Legislative Council and serves as the Majority Leader in the House of Representatives. She has sponsored bills and resolutions such as victims and survivor training for judicial personnel, crime victim service funding, and cases of domestic violence in municipal court. So we're going to welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just so you know, we got a text from Ms. Duran. Jesse got a phone call, I think, so she's just left the Capitol. She should be here about seven, but I told her that should be good timing.
It's a real, it's a real quick drive from the Capitol down here.
Yeah, well, we can get started without her.
We will get going. We're also pleased to have Heather Stoffer here from CML. Thank you very much for joining us. Mr. Goff, I'm going to turn this over to you for the heavy lifting on this.
Oh, really? Sure. I don't know. Mary Ann, do you want to help me heavy lift or, or do you just want to get started with? Yeah, Heather. And Senator Danielson, I think we have you first on the agenda. You want to just, oh, you need another mic? Yeah, you got it, okay, for you. Yeah, so we would love to hear from you on how the session's going, what bills that you are sponsoring. And I think this council may have some questions on some other specific bills, but just kind of get a sense of what's going on down there. I think we're at the midway point now, so yeah, hopefully you're not too exhausted. But yeah.
Pull that over and hit the button so you've got a green light.
Should we do introductions real quick so that everybody knows who's here? I'm Patrickoff, City Manager. Thank you.
Okay, and Bud Starker, the mayor.
Leah Osmann, Councilmember, District Four.
Judy Hutchinson, Council, District One.
Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant City Manager.
Lauren McIlac, Community Development Director.
Corey Stites, Councilmember, District Three.
Scott Home, Councilmember, District Two.
Chris Randall, City Judge.
Rachel Hultein, and proud to be your council.
And I'm Jesse Danielson. As the mayor said, I serve as a state senator for this area in Jefferson County, which now, after redistricting, includes Wheat Ridge, all of Wheat Ridge, and Golden, and other parts of Jefferson County and the surrounding areas. But it's not, it is quite different from my old district, but more similar to my old house district before I ran for the Senate. So thank you so much for inviting me, by the way. I really appreciate this. It's always a fun event every, every year, and it's great for me to hear from the city and, and to visit with you all, so I appreciate the invitation.
Thank you.
Did, are you comfortable, do you want to talk about any, any bills in specific, or would you like Heather to start and then maybe follow up if there's any questions, or it's up to you?
Sure, thanks. I can just speak a little bit about what, what I'm sponsoring this year, and then we can talk about what City of Wheat Ridge, what CML has as priorities and go from there. So, thank you. So again, Jesse Danielson, it's nice to be here, everybody. Thanks again for the invite. So I've got a number of measures, but pretty similar to kind of the issues that I've focused on over the last eight years. So I am running a bill to address the public health crisis of gun violence and working towards solving this, you know, really tragic problem that our Colorado community faces. So actually, Majority Leader Duran are carrying the same bill. It'll start in the House, I'm sorry, it'll start in the Senate, and then she'll take it over into the House. So this is a measure that will raise the legal age of purchasing firearm to twenty-one. As you know, unfortunately, it is a really disproportionate rate of the violence committed is committed by younger people. Also, of course, when we address the issue of gun violence, we're also addressing suicide, which is again too pervasive amongst young people. And so this with, partner with the other measures that are moving forward, including waiting periods, improving the Emergency Protection Orders, or ERPO, and then of course the Placa bill, we really feel that these measures are going to immediately work to prevent deaths, to save lives. And so I know that that's important to you and your constituents here in Wheat Ridge, as it is all across the state. As you know, we, or sorry, I should say, Colorado is aging more rapidly than the rest of the country, almost than the rest of the country, and definitely here in Jefferson County is aging more rapidly than the rest of the state. And we are not prepared to, to support the needs of older Coloradans. So I do a lot of work for older Coloradans, whether it was addressing elder abuse or issues facing older Coloradans in the workforce. This year I have a few measures. One is increasing medical providers for older Coloradans. So we only have a total of ninety-nine geriatricians in the entire state to serve the entirety of the population that is aging. It is a fact that Colorado is the best place on the planet to live, and so most people would like to stay where they are and live here as long as they can independently with security and dignity, and part of that is proper medical provision. And I'm sure that you, if you, if you've ever been to the doc or have visited with a loved one, you know the difference between someone who knows how to care for an older person and, and one who is not trained in geriatrics, whether it's your local pharmacist who may help identify contraindications in your medicines, or your dentist who knows how to treat older people properly, or a physician's assistant. It's, it's, it's sometimes the difference between, really between life and death. And I've definitely seen it, so we, we feel that the state should take a step up and help encourage more people to come into medical provision and focus on older people. I also have a measure that will address age discrimination in the workforce. Another pervasive problem is when older people are either trying to re-enter or move around the workforce, they are kind of taken out of the running on the front end of it because they've got age identifiers at the top of their resume. So that may be a graduation date, for example. We've found that when you remove these age identifiers, older people are kept in the running and oftentimes receive invitations to interview, which ultimately leads to a job offer. So we're going to take that away to give older Coloradans the same footing in the door, the same foot in the door, I should say, to their younger counterparts when applying for the job. Now, that doesn't mean that an employer has to hire an older person. It just means that when we remove those age identifiers, the applicants are being judged on their merits alone, just like their younger counterparts. And, and I saw a news story, Channel Four did a nice story on the bill, and actually the reporter pointed out that it could help younger people too, because I think there's age bias both directions, right? So this gives employees an equal footing on the front end. We are doing updates to the Equal Pay to Equal Work Act, so again, addressing inequities in the workforce when it comes to pay disparities, when it comes to gender pay discrepancy. So what it means is, for the same exact work, women are still being underpaid when compared to their male counterparts. So we have some updates to the two thousand and nineteen law that Colorado adopted to address pay disparities. Let's see, we've got, I am bringing forward a measure to address, again, this will help older people and people with disabilities who rely on home care workers, home healthcare workers. Now, that bill hasn't been introduced yet, but we're working with a broad coalition of supporters to try and stabilize that workforce, because again, we have far too few home care workers than the, the need out in the community. There's a number of other measures. I could go on for a while. I do want to highlight one sort of group of policies that I'm focusing on this year that will impact the indigenous community. And I know that here in Jefferson County, we are not home to any of the geographically based tribes, but across the metro area and the entire state of Colorado, there are more than two hundred thousand indigenous people who live in, in our communities, and there's a lot of work to be done there. A couple of years ago, I'm sure you remember, I did the bill to outlaw the use of racist mascots, Native American mascots. And after that, I continued to work with the community to establish the Office of Missing and Murdered Indigenous Relatives, or MMIR, sometimes known as MMIW. So we're continuing our partnership together, and this year I have three bills, actually, that, that focus on our indigenous friends and neighbors. One is updates to the Office of MMIR. One is a bill to make sure that schools are respecting the right of Native graduates to wear traditional regalia during graduation ceremonies. And the third has not been introduced yet, but we're working on it. There is a Supreme Court case that may impact the Indian Child Welfare Act. And so that brings into question some tribal sovereignty issues, as well as, as you can imagine, custody issues. So there, I'm working with the community to address a number of problems that we face, and I, and I have been really privileged to work with, with both tribal leaders and indigenous leaders across the Front Range and really across the state. And I'm happy to take any questions about the bills that I'm bringing forward, and then also I really came to hear, you know, what, what's on your mind, what CML is thinking about, and just kind of continue the conversation. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Questions for Senator Danielson? Don't all speak up at one time.
Senator was very helpful with, with our staff too, and helping us with our land acknowledgement process, and all our staff reached out to your office, and you provided some, some advice and resources on that, so thank you very much. We are still actively working on our, on that, and that was Amanda Weaver, I think, and Rachel, and a few others, but proud of that work we're doing.
Counselor Hultein.
Thank you, first of all. Thank you for all you're doing for our community here in Wheat Ridge and beyond. You mentioned that you are either, either introduced or planning on introducing updates to the MIR. Would you mind sharing more about what those updates are?
Sure, thank you so much. That bill is moving forward. That bill has been introduced. It is, I'm sorry, I don't have the bill numbers right off the top of my head, but it's called Office of MMIR, so it'll be easy to find. That, that passed out of judiciary and is currently assigned to the Appropriations Committee. So since we established the Office of MMIR, and I'm sorry, my back is to you a little bit, we, we have found some places that could be improved. Mark the date, a politician said something that she did could be improved upon. But no, in all seriousness, it is, unfortunately, the issue of MMIR is very serious. It's a very heavy issue. The witnesses that came forward to participate in the committee hearing the other day were family members of, of some of our community members that have been lost. And so, and I shouldn't say lost, been taken from us, that had, you know, unfortunately, indigenous people are victims of violent crime at a, at a disturbingly higher rate than any other group of people in Colorado and across the country. So the whole point of creating the office is to help identify why these, why these crimes are happening to our indigenous friends and neighbors. Look at the data, make recommendations back to the General Assembly on ways that we can protect this community better, and then of course provide services like the Specialized Alert System, which is up and running now. I think what we've seen is that we could do a better job of providing services directly to the families when they are experiencing this kind of a case. So again, now that we've been through, I think, six cases, which again, very high rate of occurrences, we've, we've seen some places where I think if we provided that support for the office that we created, it would be a better experience for the families who are, who are inevitably going to go through it again. And so it's that kind of thing, improving the data collection and analyzing it better. We've, we've said there, there has to be one staff person that is there to help interact with the family members. So just some smaller scale changes that I think will have a really immediate and effective impact when, when families and, and, and the communities go through it, because as you know, that involves law enforcement, that involves community members, it involves different jurisdictional leadership, so the, the different, interacting with the different jurisdictions, the tribal police, the local police, it's, it's a lot to take on and to help sort out. And so when it's happening, we can probably do a better job of providing information and support to the families. And ultimately, if the office is as effective as it can be, and again, we've just started it, so we want to make sure we're supporting the work at the office, then we hope that obviously we can, our, our primary concern is bringing these people home, bringing home family members who are currently missing, and there's a lot of them, dozens and dozens. So bringing home those family members, but ultimately preventing any more from going missing. We don't want to add any more names to our list. And I do want to thank another partner who came on in support of the bill is the District Attorney's Council. So we worked with them to address some concerns that they had with how I wrote the thing, and they, and again, our partners in law enforcement and lots of community voices, they see what we're trying to do here. And so we were able to address some of their concerns, keeping the intent of the bill intact, move forward, and they came on as in a support position.
That's Senate Bill Fifty-four.
Thank you. Senate Bill Twenty-three, Fifty-four, thank you.
Research assistance.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Chief?
I'm sorry, just a quick question for you. Senator, you mentioned the extreme rates of violence in the indigenous community. I think we've seen that over the years. Are you talking about a bill that deals with violence from external forces against indigenous people, or are you finding that it's more or less indigenous folks who are involved in violent cycles within their community and their culture?
So used to being recognized, you know what I'm doing.
We're gonna, I'll recognize the question, or you could go ahead and respond.
Yes, thank you. So I, I look to the folks who are the experts on the ground, like yourselves. What I did in my bill last year was create the Office of Missing and Murdered Indigenous Relatives. So really, it's focused on those who have been victimized. So if you are an indigenous person and you go missing, then, then this is what triggers, what triggers the process to involve this new office. And so before this office existed, there was really no specialized effort by the state of Colorado to address what I call a crisis because the rates of violence and because the rates of kidnapping, and unfortunately, the rates of murder are, are much higher than any other, like I said, any other group of people. So my colleagues in the House and Senate agreed, as many other states are taking steps to create similar efforts to address it right away, to set up this office. So currently, there's one staff person, the director, and they're putting into place sort of a, an advisory council, which is made up of lots of different voices, law enforcement, urban, rural, tribal voices. So we, we said that both of the councils have to have a seat at the table from both of the Ute tribes in the southwestern corner of the state, but also organizational leaders in the metro area who provide services for indigenous people. So I'm less familiar with the perpetrators. What we're focused on are the people who experience the violence, and if they are a member of the indigenous community, then they can, then an alert will go out, and that's where the office can help coordinate the response, so hopefully we can find the individual. So that would be more what we're concerned about, are the people who are experiencing the violence, and to try and slow it down and hopefully eventually stop it.
Thank you. Additional questions? I had one sort of on the, when you, when you started to talk about older, older Coloradans, I thought you might run a bill that would reverse the effects of aging.
Oh.
But maybe, maybe you can put that on, on next year, on next year's hopeful bill list. But in lieu of not having that, home healthcare workers, I know, are really, we have a lot of senior folks in Wheat Ridge, and you're right, they want to, they want to retire in place, and give us a little information on how that might work.
So, so yes, there's, there's lots of support networks that we should build up and strengthen that provide health care and other services to older people, so that, like you said, we can age in place, age in our homes, as long as we feel it's right. And so when an older person is making decisions about their health care, their residence, their jobs, et cetera, we're, we're doing our parts to support the, the people who built this community up. So if home health care is the right path for you or your loved one, you know, what that means is that instead of being in an assisted living or nursing home type of a setting, that you can employ a home care provider to be in your home. So they might not be a medical doctor or a registered nurse, but a home care provider nonetheless, to be in your home, to provide this day-to-day care that we really do depend on. And I'm sure a lot of you have loved ones, or you yourselves have experienced it. The way I like to say it is, we all will someday, right? I certainly am very, very familiar with the excellent care that home care providers give us in our families and, and then community-wide. We're at a severe shortage right now. There's a lot of turnover in the profession. People are leaving the profession, and a lot of the problems include a lack of, of training, terrible pay rates, and you can't depend on a schedule. Wage theft is prevalent, meaning things like being asked to drive and not be reimbursed, work off the clock and not be reimbursed, these types of things. I am working with the SEIU, the Service Employees International Union, who represents a lot of different professions, whether it's the workers at DIA or home care workers themselves. There's an offshoot of that organization called the Colorado Care Workers United. I'm also working with representatives of the disability rights community to make sure that we're striking a balance between what, what, what the consumers want, what the workers need, and what the community wants. And what we want to do is create a board within the CDLE to function as sort of a, a place where we can have recommendations back to the legislature on policy that will help, help stabilize this workforce. Right now, I will say, we, we are way behind the ball when it comes to what, what, what we should have in place for, for a stabilized workforce to serve the community, the consumers who will, who need currently and will need services at home, to make sure, like you mentioned, those who wish to age in place are able to do so in an affordable way with dependable care from people who are being paid a proper wage with good training and protections in their own workplace. So in order to stabilize that workforce, we kind of need a longer-term plan, as well as some immediate recommendations to the legislature. But we want a, a sort of a robust viewpoint on it. So there's going to be, members of this new board will include workers, will include employers, will include members of the disability rights community. We're still shaping it. Like I said, I haven't introduced the bill yet. It should be coming soon, but that's, that's sort of the idea, is that there's a, there is a place that we set up in the state government to focus on this specific problem, a lack of home care provision, and how to stabilize that workforce into the future, but also some immediate concerns that they may be able to make recommendations back to the General Assembly in the next few years. We're going to outline kind of a, a deadline for those decisions, and, you know, again, we'll, we'll welcome your feedback if you have it. We're kind of starting with, with the workers and the consumers who will utilize that care as a starting point prior to introduction, but, but that's the idea, not a specific bill, not a specific approach, but creating a place where those decisions will be made to address these concerns in the near future and in the long term.
Do you think that might include workforce training and, and educational opportunities to bring, to bring new, new people into the, into the profession?
I, I think so. I, like I said, the, the problems that I see include some of that, that there are, there are some, some wonderful agencies who treat their workers very well, as in any, any profession, and then there's some that don't. And so what the consumer feels on the back end, what, what, what we, the community members experience are poorly paid, poorly trained workers, or people who wish to be in the profession who are leaving it. I, I have met some of the most amazing caregivers, but when they earn the same wage for twenty years, and it wasn't high to begin with, they struggle to pay their own bills, they can't afford health care, and they provide it. They can't take care of their parents, they can't take care of their kids on the wages that they earned, so they leave to find another place to work, but their heart is in caregiving. Well, I think we can do a little bit better by those workers. And, and in the end, like I said, it's focused on, on the consumers, on our loved ones who, who will depend on this care. But I think we owe it to the workers in the state to make sure that they're trained well, paid well, treated with respect and dignity, and so we need to address the concerns of the consumers who need the care, but also why is that workforce so unstable right now? What can we as the state do to, to fix it? So I think those are some great examples of what may come up, but I'm not being prescriptive in the bill of, of what they have to decide. We want it to be a conversation that comes to, to We want it to be a conversation that comes together to provide some really solid advice going forward.
Thank you. Additional questions for the Senator? Why don't we let you take a pause, then? Thank you very much for sharing those initiatives that you have coming up. You'll be looking for those in the State House. We'll just, you want to go to CML?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have Heather Stauffer here with CML. Heather, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Okay. As Mayor Starke mentioned, my name's Heather Stauffer. I'm the Legislative and Advocacy Manager for the Colorado Municipal League. Very happy to be here today. For those of you who may not be as familiar with CML, we're a member-driven organization. We represent 270 of the 272 towns and cities in Colorado, of which, City of Wheat Ridge is one. And I came very, very close today. I live just across the way in Arvada. I hope that's okay with everyone. But you're about 10, 15 minutes from my house, so I appreciate that. It was very convenient for me to get here.
Okay is the operative word.
It's okay. I know, I know. I hate to even bring it up. So, I was just gonna go over a few of the bills that we're watching. So, I'll just mention, so in addition to myself, there are three other lobbyists who work at the State House during the legislative session, myself, and then Megan McKillop, who handles our housing policy, Molly Steineman, who handles a lot of our public safety issues, and then Jaclyn Turway, who handles a lot of our employment issues. But we really run the gamut on the amount of the topics that we cover down at the State House. So, usually, if it's happening at the State House, we're involved in some way or another. So, I, Mary Ann was kind enough to send me a list of bills that you guys might be interested in, but I'm happy to answer questions on anything else. And I think you have our bill list as well, so please feel free to stop me at any point of time. But I'll go over these lists, these bills with you as some bills that we're watching and taking part in. So, the first one I wanted to mention was House Bill 1042. This is deception in juvenile custodial interrogations. This would impact the admissibility of confessions made in juvenile custody interrogations, custodial interrogations, rather, excuse me, if the law enforcement president employ the use of what they're calling deception. So, it makes a statement or admission of a juvenile presumptively inadmissible in court if a law enforcement official knowingly uses deception, which is defined in the bill, prior or during the custodial interrogation, unless the prosecution can prove that the statement was made voluntarily despite the deception used. It would also require law enforcement to electronically record all juvenile custodial interrogations regardless of the nature of the offense. Currently, there are some custodial interrogations for juveniles that are required to be recorded. This would just extend that to all of them. And then, it does have a component of law enforcement training as part of that bill as well. CML asked for some amendments on this bill, and we got several of them. The good faith exception to address concerns about an officer saying something that they believe is true at the time but turns out to be untrue, that's just kind of the nature of these kind of interrogations. We got an amendment that removes prior to or during the custodial interrogation and replaces it with to obtain it. Words matter, so that's helpful for us. And then, the amendment completely struck the definition of agent and replaces it with a person who acts with the motive of assisting law enforcement's efforts to obtain a confession, because not, we are not the only ones doing these interrogations. So, with all of those amendments that we were able to get, we are neutral on the bill. We do think that the training aspect of this bill is very important, and we are backing up our law enforcement friends as they ask for more dollars for training purposes there. Senate Bill 97, this is around auto theft. And as we all know, especially in the metro area, auto theft is a huge problem for our communities. This is a bill that we're supporting that it would increase the minimum charge associated with motor vehicle theft and decouples it with the value of the vehicle, which is what is currently, so essentially, if you have a more expensive car, you get a higher charge, which isn't always great for victims who need their cars, and they're not always super expensive cars. So, it changes that structure and it reclassifies the crimes. So, we are supporting that as a way to manage and mitigate auto theft in our communities. That bill I'll just mention passed out of the Senate Judiciary with a unanimous vote of approval. So, we know that the governor is supportive of that, those efforts, so I would expect that to make its way pretty easily to the governor's desk, and hopefully, that will reduce the amount of auto theft that we see in our communities. House Bill 1169, this is the limit arrest for the low-level offenses. And I'll just note that this bill will be up in the House Judiciary tomorrow at 1:30, and we will be there to testify in an opposition position there. Essentially, this bill would prohibit the use of arrest for petty offenses, except for petty theft. So, petty offenses would be all drug petty offenses, all Class II misdemeanor traffic offenses, any comparable municipal offenses, and municipal offense for which there's no comparable state misdemeanor offense. So, instead, the bill would require summons in lieu of arrest. And we're very concerned about this. We do think that it's appropriate in many circumstances for officers to use the tool of arrest, even in misdemeanor situations, from a public safety perspective. You know, this would cover things like trespassing and unlawful conduct on public property, and we would not be allowed to arrest under the provisions of this bill. And sometimes, arrest is needed to stop dangerous behaviors. So, we are opposing this with a coalition of about 14 other organizations, so we will be there tomorrow to testify in opposition to that bill. Moving on to courts, House Bill 1107, this is the Crime Victim Services Funding Bill. This is actually gonna be sponsored by Majority Leader Duran, and when she gets here. We are supporting this bill. We think it's a great way to help victims of crimes. It appropriates about $15 million to various crime victim services programs, the State Victims Assistance in Law Enforcement Program specifically, or VAIL. And it would, so we think that that's a really great use of some dollars to go into those services for those crime service, excuse me, crime victims services. So, we will be supporting that bill. It passed out of the Judiciary Committee, and it's waiting to be heard in appropriations. So, we'll continue to lobby on behalf of that. The governor's office also has said that they want to see that bill fully appropriated, so we're very optimistic about that as well. House Bill 1182, this is the remote public access to criminal court proceedings. And this bill would require that all Colorado courts, including municipal courts, would have to make criminal court proceedings conducted in open court available for remote public viewing, unless the courtroom doesn't have the technology to be able to do that. The courtroom notably can still exclude members of the public from viewing proceedings through a court order, if that's appropriate. We're in an opposed and less amended position on this bill. While we've heard that this bill is intended to address issues happening on mostly the district level and county court, there haven't really been complaints on the municipal level for these kinds of issues, so we're thinking that it's better probably addressed at the county level. So, it also doesn't address, you know, you may have the technology to stream, but you may not have the staff to be able to use that technology to stream, so it doesn't have exactly the exemptions that you would need. I will note that this bill was taken off the calendar and will be scheduled for a later date, so it has not been heard for committee yet, and I think the proponents are probably looking to negotiate a little bit on that bill. So, we are in an opposed and less amended position on that, and we'll see where that goes. I'll mention affordable housing. This is a huge topic down at the legislature this year, and we're, of course, aware of a very large land use and zoning package coming from the governor's office at some point in the next, probably in the next few weeks. He spoke about it in his state address very early on, and we know that he's talking to individual local governments, and it sounds like the city is, has scheduled a meeting with him as well. A lot of the things that we have heard will be in the bill will also come from a working group, which includes some business groups and environmental groups as well. Some of the proposals that we've heard in the bill will be very helpful, I think, for increasing affordable housing. However, there are some provisions in the bill, the preemption of local authority, which are very troubling and concerning. So, we have not seen a draft. However, you know, we've been talking with folks, and some of the things that we do expect, there'll be likely be mandates, including housing strategies and comprehensive plans. We heard that perhaps communities will set their targets in that, but then the plans would go to the state ultimately. We know that a lot of the focus will be on making it easier to build ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and multiplexes. We've heard that maybe municipalities with more than 10,000 will, must require ADUs, and that might be different for rural resort communities. Middle housing use by right will probably be part of that, and then allowing lot splits is something that we've also heard may be included in that. I know that there's a huge focus on transit-oriented development there and allowing for more density in urban and rural job centers. Our only concern about that is you have to have the transit in order to do transit-oriented development. So, we just want to make sure we're not putting the cart before the horse there, because there's a lot of work to be done on transit, as you guys well know. And then, finally, there, we know that there will be something in there to prohibit growth caps. So, we're waiting to hear about what that will exactly look like at this point, but we do expect to see something in the next couple of weeks. I'll also mention one thing that I forgot. I do know that there will be a water element as part of this package of bills. I don't know exactly what that will look like at this point, but we do know that there will be something concerning water and growth. You know, we all agree that affordable housing is important to our communities, and it's a huge challenge that local governments are facing. I think where we land on it is that we don't think that by taking local governments out of the equation, that we're gonna be able to provide more affordable housing. I think that needs to be something that's left in the local community's hands, so that locals have a voice in these discussions. And we know that increasing supply does not always increase affordable housing. So, we really need to look at what these proposals are in that lens as well. So, one thing that I have, we have put out, you know, CML, in an interest in working collaboratively on these issues, we've put together some ideas on what would be helpful for the state to address in terms of affordable housing for locals. So, I do have some information here, if you guys are interested, as you're having your conversations. That gives a good overview on some really great stuff that the state could be focusing on, that would actually help local governments provide more affordable housing and help our programs that we already have in place. So, please feel free to grab one of those. You guys had mentioned House Bill 1115, the repeal prohibition on local residential rent control is something that you were interested in as well. It would repeal the current law that's prohibiting a local government from enacting laws that control rent for residential real property or private residential housing. CML has taken a neutral position on this. A few years ago, we ran a bill to clarify that inclusionary zoning was not rent control, and so, we feel that we've gotten what we needed in terms of that out of our previous bill, so we decided to kind of keep our powder dry on this one. We're gonna be finding a lot of stuff on housing and rent, or affordable housing and zoning, so this one, we feel like we didn't have to take a position on there. So, we are gonna stay out of that question. And then, you had mentioned transportation, Mary Ann, but, you know, there's not a lot happening in the transportation realm this session, unfortunately. I think after 161, a couple of years ago, we're just, we're gonna let that lie for a little bit and come back. So, those are the bills that I had flagged, but I'm happy to answer questions on any of the bills that we're following, if you have them.
Thank you. Heather, questions for Heather?
Mayor, Heather, on the governor's proposed bill, is it, do you have any idea, is it gonna be, is it gonna be one large bill or numerous? Do you have any idea if it's gonna be broken up into specific topics?
Yeah, I would imagine that they would need to split it up, because I think it's covering such a wide gamut. I don't know that they'd be able to fit everything under the single subject title. Yeah, so I would expect it to be multiple bills, a package of bills. Yep.
Heather, I had a question on another bill that was coming out. It was House Bill 231190, and it was concerning to write a first refusal to purchase qualifying multifamily residential property by a local government.
Yes.
Speak a little bit to that.
Sure. So, 1190 would allow a local government, when someone is putting multifamily housing up for sale, it would automatically send a notification to a local government, and if the local government has chosen to opt into that, they could kind of be part of those negotiations and potentially buy that multifamily housing as a first right of refusal in the title. So, that is something that we've asked the sponsor to make a number of amendments on. He has made all of those different amendments, including an opt-out provision. We felt like it was important for communities who did not want to take advantage of a tool like that to be able to opt out. So, there is an opt-out provision of that, and you can still receive notifications on properties that are up for sale. The proponents of this really feel like this will give local governments the opportunity to maybe get some more multifamily homes that they maybe weren't able to get beforehand. So, we are in a supportive amended position on that. Our board took a position last time, and I believe that we have gotten the amendments that we need, but I would need to double-check on that. So, did you have any specific questions on it?
I just wondered whether, if the municipality wasn't able to complete the purchase, would there be a liquidated damage or any other, you know, if the property's gone off the market because the municipality has a right of first refusal?
Right.
You know, 14 days, and 90 days, and 180 days later, if the lottery will be closed?
Right.
What happens to the seller's interest in that?
I, yeah, and a lot of those questions were brought up at our Policy Committee as well, and we had a really good discussion. I think that they're looking to limit the number of days that you can be part of those discussions without forfeiting your right. I think that there's some amendments in there as well. I don't have them in front of me, but I'm happy to get you some more information on that. But it was a concern that was certainly brought up.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Is there a threshold on the size of multifamily? Do you know, the bill, I haven't read it.
Yes, there is.
I can look it up later.
And I will, I can find it for you.
I can find it later.
Sorry, it's not right in front of me.
Nope, just curious.
But yes, there's what defines multifamily, yes.
And is it the local government or housing authorities eligible?
It can be a local government partner with a housing authority, I believe. Those P3 partnerships are eligible for this, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Counsel, excuse me, Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. I do want to just mention, you asked about transportation, and a couple of things. One, House Bill 1101 is the ozone bill, and it's refining some of the fair-free transit from last year, so I am excited about that, because it would make another month of fair-free transit. And as a city, I think it would be really fun for us to figure out innovative ways to encourage people to ride transit, because as Heather just said, we really need to, the more people ride transit, the better our transit's gonna be. So, I just want to put in a chime for that. I've actually been working on the land use bill through my day job.
Oh, nice.
And it's really con- And, and it's really conflicting for me, because my, my day job at times kind of conflicts a little bit with this job in terms of my interests and, and what that bill could be and, and, but I think one of the things that really stands out to me is, one of the things that got me involved in it initially was when CDOT adopted the greenhouse gas rule, mandating greenhouse gas reductions. One of the, the principal things for, for CDOT and for Dr. Cog to achieve that is through land use efficiency, that's fundamentally reducing the need to drive for them to statutorily, statutorily reach their targets. They, they, land use efficiency has to be part of that. So I think, you know, everyone's trying to grapple with, like, how do we get there? And, you know, first of all, I just want to be proud, I think Wheat Ridge is, is doing a lot of great things around that. We do need to see more investments in transit for that to work, but one of the biggest concerns I have, just based on our recently adopted affordable housing strategy, is that the, the upzoning and densification around transit with a certain headways, you know, could actually result in displacement of the type of affordable housing that our community has just identified as a top priority for us, for investing our community resources to rehab. So I think when, when I'm tracking it, I'm just really wanting to make sure that we are preserving the existing affordable housing that we have first. That's, that's a strategy that Wheat Ridge has identified is, is more valuable right now than trying to incentivize additional investment to actually, like, create either market reductions or IZOs. So that is, that is something, but I, I am really interested in seeing stronger regional approaches for affordable housing and for efficient land use, because it's, you know, even in the metro area, but even across the state, like, that to me feels like it happens at the regional level. Most communities are more like Wheat Ridge than Denver, and, and we can't do it alone. And so I think it's a time of really thinking, how do we start to kind of slipknot a little bit, so that, you know, our, our local control issues are leaning into regional solutions? And it's, it's complicated, but I think we're at a time where we really need to be looking, you know, through a different lens in terms of how to get there. So those are just my thoughts on those. And then I think on Wednesday, the governor is announcing his energy package. I know he is, because my son's going to be in the press conference for it, but I just want to mention here, the governor's proposing, as part of that, $800 e-bike tax rebates for every Coloradan who's interested in buying an e-bike for 10 years. And so I, just at this table, want us to realize, like, e-bikes are increasingly going to be part of our transportation system, especially if this particular bill passes. So just, it's going to be exciting. There's some, some fun in there, I think, for heat pumps and then also for some electric school buses, so, anyway, good stuff coming out of the House this year.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Additional questions for Heather? Councilwoman Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to address the HB 231065, the Local Government Independent Ethics Commission.
Yes.
So we've kind of talked on, amongst our council about this a couple of times, and agreed that we have the jurisdiction to create an ethics commission amongst ourselves, and would this hinder that ability? Is that why CML is opposing it?
Great question. So in the history of the Ethics Commission, there has always been a question on whether it applies to home rules, so I think it's pretty clear that Ethics Commission has jurisdiction over statutory cities and towns as well as, as others. However, on home rule, we, we feel pretty confident that the Ethics Commission does not have jurisdiction over home rule municipalities, especially if they have rules around ethics that substantially address what the Ethics Commission addresses. For this bill, we wanted to make it very clear, because the definition of local government that they used seemed to envelop home rules as well, so we wanted to make sure that that was, and that wasn't their intention to do that, I think it was just a drafting issue. So we act, we got a, an amendment on there that redefined what it was that they were looking for. They were looking to add special districts and school districts under the purview of the, of the Ethics Commission, so I think we're currently, I think I need to change that on there, I think we're neutral on that, because we did get that amendment, and so as long as that stays on, we're, we're good with that.
Okay, thank you. And the other one that I wanted to see if you could just kind of briefly summarize is the HB 231054, the property valuation. So I, I have the bill pulled up in front of me, but it, I can't tell if they feel it's going to substantially decrease valuation and reassessments, or, because I see that they're removing 10,000 from residential and 15, or sorry, 15 from residential and 30 from commercial, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So I think that anytime that we remove property taxes, even though cities and towns get substantially, you know, from sales tax, that does have an impact on local governments as well, so the decrease in that property value, I think, is what we're concerned with.
So it, it would be an overall decrease in the assessment value?
Yep, it would decrease local government revenue, ultimately.
Okay. Further, further questions or discussions from council? Lauren?
Thank you. Heather, about the affordable housing, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, and for the governor's proposal, or what we understand of it at this point in time, some of the regulations, or maybe the package of it seems to presume that we can build our way out of affordable housing by allowing more density, you alluded to that too. Do you know if he's, if the concept is that by having, by enacting this local regulatory framework, you gain access to financial resources, or it's really strictly about sort of the land use regulation?
That's a good question, and I don't know that I know enough about it to educatedly answer that.
Yeah.
But I do think there is a focus on increasing the supply, and that will in itself create more affordable housing, which I think is something that we're a little concerned about. But without having seen the actual bill, I can't say whether, how it would go about at this point, sorry.
That was my sense too, and I was just trying to see if I was missing something.
Yeah, I don't think so. Thank you. I think you're, you're right on, but.
No, nope.
Okay, Councilor Ong.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question. The Senate Bill 23166, Establishment of Wildfire Resiliency Code. What was the, that was opposed? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yes, of course. So that bill, it comes from a fire commission recommendation in 2022, I want to say, and they recommended that the state create a wildfire resiliency code board within the Department of Public Safety. What this code board would be required, would be tasked with doing would be to, one, define where the wildland urban interface is located in Colorado. We don't currently have, like, an actual definition or map of where the WUI is, is what they call it. So part of what this board would do is require them to define where the WUI is specifically, and then they would be tasked with creating statewide building codes that would apply within the WUI for, for buildings, for new development, and then I believe for retrofitting, of substantial retrofits, excuse me. And so obviously, building codes are under the purview of local governments. We do think that it's appropriate for local governments to have some say in what those building codes are, and the needs of Grand Junction are very, very different from the needs of Pueblo. So creating, we think creating an entire statewide code to address wildfire may not be appropriate for every community, and so that's why we're opposed and less amended on that bill.
Thank you. One other question is, what do you do when you have one entity that gives recommendations on not building, but the municipality says, "Don't worry about it, go ahead and do it"? How does that play into that?
Can you provide a little bit more context? What entity?
I, I don't want to go into specifics and name names, but this, this is something that is, that I've encountered right now.
Okay.
Where one entity made a recommendation of, this is in the wildland urban area, and the municipality said this, you know, this isn't an issue. And I understand there's a lot of nuances, but, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to know, and I don't know if, if it being at a state level would help that, because I do understand there's home rule municipalities, and that's a whole nother layer, but, but if there's no state entity that's overseeing everything, and I do understand there's a lot of different nuances, but something to pull everything together, but that's what I was wondering about the opposition.
Yeah, so this would definitely, if it were to pass, would require any new construction to have, like, the hardening of structures is what they call it, so it would, it would maybe require a metal roof, it would require, you know, whatever this code board comes up with, you would have to include that in your new construction. I don't think that this board would be able to say you cannot build in a specific area. I don't think that that's what they would be tasked with, so.
Heather, has there been any discussion about addressing construction defects again to address affordable housing? It seems like that's one of the bigger potential solutions, but they don't want to address it.
There was, there's been a little bit of chatter about it, but I wouldn't say that I know of anything substantial. Senator Danielson might know something more than me, but I haven't heard a ton on it.
Have you seen anything for House Bill 1192, which is, changes to the Colorado Consumer Protection Act, which I've had people say that this really is sort of going the wrong way on construction defects?
I have heard that. I think at this point, let me just pull this up and make sure that I have the right position. We're still analyzing that bill for, to figure out what impacts it could have, but I did just recently hear from one of the opponents of that bill that it, they thought it could have some impacts on construction defects, so I think we're still analyzing that to try to figure out whether we're going to get involved in that or not.
Thank you.
Chief, you always have questions for the legislature, not this year? You being too easy on you?
Well, I think we're, on the crime bills, we're certainly in codes, not necessarily that we discussed it ahead of time, but I think we're on the same page when it comes to the, some of the impactful bills that impact public safety. I guess, while the senator's here, if you give me a few minutes to indulge some of the issues we have, Senator, thank you for being here. Certainly, I concern, our officers concern themselves with the health of this community when it comes to public safety and maintaining law and order and protecting life and property, so a lot of that has been impacted, as you can understand in the last couple of years, and so we've, we've had some struggles to keep up with some of the issues out there. One of the, I think one of the major issues we have are around fentanyl, so I can talk about specific bills really quickly, but fentanyl is certainly a, a driving factor. Every day our officers deal with it, every day our officer sees some, every day, or not every day, but very often our officers are saving lives with Narcan. So again, protecting lives and, and all the downfall that comes from fentanyl is, is very near and dear to us, because we see a lot of property crimes that come from the, the need to fulfill that addiction and whatnot, so that, that has certainly inhibited our ability to do other things. We spend a lot of time on fentanyl and dealing with fentanyl issues, so the help you can offer around fentanyl. Certainly, the, the issue is brought up, I think it's 1169 for, for the limit low, low level offenses. We did a survey, we have about 97% of our low-level municipal offenses are given a citation. We only use it 3% of the time. So this seems like, this seems like an answer for something that really is not in question, in, in our opinion, and that's based on ours, Arvada, and Grand Junction, looking at our data and saying, "How many times do we actually go out and arrest an offender for municipal infraction"? It's actually a little bit more here, a little bit less in Arvada, but not much. And so we, we have that tool, and that's the only way we can interrupt sometimes criminal behavior that's ongoing and get them in front of the judge, so that the judge can direct them to resources. There was some allegation that this would impact a person's ability to maintain their current treatment program, but quite frankly, a lot of those folks aren't on treatment program when we arrest them, and if they are, they, they're not really doing very well at it, because they're a problem for us. So we're fully in support of, of, of that bill going away. So those are two of them, and the last one I would say is the auto theft bill. We certainly are in support of that. We're nervous that if, the longer it takes, the less, the more that somebody will build some sort of opposition to that, so we'd love to see that get pushed through as quickly as we can. In Wheat Ridge last year, we had 423 stolen autos for a city of 35,000 people, and that's down from the year before. So it's way too many stolen autos, there's no account of, there's less accountability there than we think needs that, that, that prevents folks from really questioning themselves whether or not to take that automobile, so we'd like to see that bill, we're supportive of that as well. So I hate to give you a diatribe, but we've, we've struggled the last two years, and lastly, I'll just say we're struggling to maintain our, our ranks, our professional ranks, and this is a catch-22 for policing. The less people we have, the more overworked they are, the more overburdened they are, and certainly the newer our forces are. If you can believe it or not, the longest-tenured police chief in, in Jefferson County sits before you here with three years of experience.
Oh.
Yeah. I don't think that's a great thing. I don't say.
Three years of experience in Wheat Ridge.
In Wheat Ridge?
You have a lot of experience.
Three, three years of experience in Wheat Ridge, but I don't think it's a great thing to have such a brain drain in, in our profession, and a lot of that is folks who, who, you know, you know, over the years, have left for one reason or another, sometimes it was time to retire, but that's a very young core of police chiefs, so I think that's also reflected in our, our newer officers, when we can find qualified folks, so we need help in hiring and retention there as well, so when you see those bills. I hope you think favorably of us, think Wheat Ridge when you think about hiring, and, and think Wheat Ridge when you think about crime reduction. We're, we're all in favor of that, so appreciate your audience here tonight.
Thank you. Do we have other, other discussion that we'd like to have around our legislative, I'm sorry that Representative Duran's running a little bit later today than I hoped. Yes?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let everybody know, Majority Leader Duran texted me and said that she is stuck and cannot come, not, not like physically stuck on the highway, but that with the load of work this week, getting out late, that she just can't come here tonight, but you all know how invested she is in Wheat Ridge, and said, "Please give pass on my apologies." So, sorry for Representative Duran. You know she and I partner on a number of the bills that I described over the last many years. When I moved to the Senate, she ran it for my House seat and has championed some of the similar issues. I know you're familiar with her work, and we are lucky to have her in the seat of the Majority Leader, you know, for, for us here in Wheat Ridge, so she passes on her regrets. I know you know how to reach her, and, and I know how responsive she is to the local community, having served here for a long time, so.
Well, thank you very much. Please extend our thanks to her for the work that she does on behalf of our, of ourselves, and I hope she gets home safely tonight, and I know it's a, it's, it's a long 120 days.
And are there more questions?
Do we have any more? I guess we don't, so.
So I just wanted to take a quick moment. This is my Senate District Council, live in Wheat Ridge, and I'm, I am sincerely grateful, and so are my family members. I have a kindergartner now who attends Stevens', and we put her there because it was our neighborhood school. It's just how we feel. I know everyone has their own choice, but now that we know the school a little better, we're so overwhelmed every day with the quality of the educators, from the bus drivers to the food service providers, the teachers, the paras, everybody, you know, the, your, your team constantly impressed with the Wheat Ridge Police Department, all of you taking time to serve at this level. It is a thankless job, but, but you have built a great community, and so now that I've been here for many years, and I have two kids now, I have a baby and a five-year-old, I came here because my grandparents lived here. I've got family that are constituents and constituents of yours, and we're all very, very proud of Wheat Ridge as a city, and I just think you've done an amazing job, so if you don't get told enough, we are grateful. It's a completely different animal to serve at the local level, and you have my respect and gratitude sincerely. And like I said, the longer we stay, the more of the services that you contribute to we're experiencing, you know? So we see you every day, every day, and we're very grateful.
Well, Senator, we really appreciate the work that you do for us on behalf. Well, Senator, we really appreciate the work that you do for us on behalf down at the Capitol, so thank you very much.
And then do you have business to do now?
We have one more. You can, you're welcome to go home to your face.
Okay, yes, and I do have my cards. Does anybody not have my contact information? Okay, you all know how to reach me? Okay. And we do listen, so again, I'm really grateful for the invitation. We should probably interact more than we do. You were also kind enough to lend us your facility for our town halls. You know, that matters when we bring people here to Wheat Ridge. So again, to the council people and Mr. Mayor, thanks again for a job well done. It's a tough one, I know, so. I will get out of your hair, and if you do have follow-up questions on my bills, or if there is something that you feel particularly strong about, CML has great lobbyists, we see them every day, but again, you, and they do, they also, the breadth of the policy that you all weigh in on is broad, right? So utilize them, please, but if you also want to just reach me directly, please never hesitate to do so. You can also follow me on social media if you want to keep track of what I'm doing, weigh in, and if you're ever in the building, please let me know. Or your kids, by the way, Isabel's kindergarten classroom is coming on Friday-
All right.
...to both of the kindergartens at Stevens'. So, you know, things like that, if there's more that I can be doing, even lighter-hearted, let me know. And in the policy realm too, you know, I did introduce a bill to establish the state fossil license plate, so if any of you have five-year-olds who love dinosaurs-
It's hard to get a support gap. Because it's fun!
It is. You know, I tell you, it can be, you can get really down in some very serious issues, and sometimes we need a little lighthearted to remind people that, you know, that what we do in the building can also be fun. And so please, please let me know how I can be either more responsive, or, you know, if you have ideas, bring them my way. And then I'm going to leave you to your business the rest of the evening. Okay?
Thank you very much, Senator.
All right, take care.
And Heather, thank you very much, and the work that you do on our behalf. Thanks, Senator. Take care.
All right, great, thanks so much. Safe driving back to Arvada. You, did you have something? No. No.
Oh. Oh, she loves, oh, Jesus. Okay. Ready to go to number two?
Well, we're ready, I think. Steve's up here.
Then we will go to agenda item number two. This is a new urban renewal plan formation.
Great, I'm just going to turn it over to Steve, Steve Art, our Economic Development Manager and Urban Renewal Authority Executive Director.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goff, and members of the council. In August, we came to you with a proposal to form a new urban renewal plan area for the Lutheran Legacy Campus, which you provided authority for us to move forward, and we are working with a consultant right now to form that plan. In the interim time, community development was approached with a new development within another area of town here that we would think would be very valuable to form an urban renewal plan. And I'll kind of take a step back and talk about urban renewal, although in August, I believe you were all at the study session and were provided with information about urban renewal. Our urban renewal was formed in Wheat Ridge in 1981 with the Town Center Plan. And that, as Patrick explained at that meeting, that really is the area between the Safeway Center and the Big Lots Center, the park that was created there. That plan has went away, and subsequently, we have formed five additional plan areas in the city. The most recent one was the West End 38th Plan. We also have the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan, the I-70 Kipling Corridor Plan, the Wadsworth Corridor Plan, the 44th Avenue Ward Area Subarea Plan, and I believe that covers all the plan areas that we have within the city. They're all, as I always tell my new board members, if you read one urban renewal plan area, you've read all the urban renewal plan areas. What they allow us to do is provide assistance to development, providing public infrastructure that otherwise could not be afforded by these projects, and these developments would not move forward without the use of tax increment financing. Tax increment financing basically is the ability for us to capture property taxes that normally would flow to the county and then off to special districts. Those monies flow back to Wheat Ridge directly to be used directly in Wheat Ridge developments, Wheat Ridge activities, to improve infrastructure and public improvements, such as the cleanup of the site at 38th Avenue and Yukon Court, there was a dry cleaner. We spent a lot of money on cleaning that side up, took many years for us to do it, but ultimately, our goal is not to make money there, it's to clean up and make blighting conditions within the city of Wheat Ridge improved and to remedy those conditions. So recently, if we do do the new plan area for the Lutheran Legacy Campus and then the addition of this plan area, it would kick in the enactment of a bill that was passed in 2015 and went into effect in 2016, HB 1348, which would add three additional members to our urban renewal board. Those three additional members would be a representative of the county commissioners, it could be a county commissioner or it could be a representative theirs. The second member must be a member of the school board, and the third member would be an appointed member from all the other remaining taxing entities. They would select one individual to be their representative. And at that time, that would bring our members up to 10 and would certainly be within the county's, the city's purview if they choose to bring on an 11th member, so that we have an odd member for voting purposes. So again, as I mentioned, community development was approached, Lauren, that was probably about four or five months ago with development. The U.S. Truck School, in fact, many members of my urban renewal board weren't even aware that this property was in the city of Wheat Ridge. That's kind of how hidden it is there. It is that property that is bordered between Wadsworth and Carr and I-70 and Clear Creek to the south. It contains, the largest user in that right now is the U.S. Truck School that is in that site there. It includes a property that is approximately 33 acres in size. We think would be a great area to form an urban renewal plan area. I believe at our last meeting that we had in August, our legal side, Corey Hoffman, pointed out that we have to find, there are 11 blighting conditions, and we have to find at least four of those. He mentioned that within the Lutheran Legacy Campus, there would be no problem finding them, and we're certainly sure in this property that there would be no problem finding those four blighting conditions to form an urban renewal plan in there. It would allow us to bring in more job centers into that site, allow us to provide for public infrastructure, which will make better buildings out in that area there, and really increase the viability of that light industrial area. We don't have a lot of light industrial within Wheat Ridge. A lot of our employers are small employers who grow larger and inevitably, unfortunately, have to move out of Wheat Ridge. This will be an opportunity for us to build a large, substantially larger building there, which will provide employment there, and we would then have the option to provide public tax increment financing on those public improvements. Mr. Goff, is there anything else you would like to add to that?
No, I think that's the basics of this, but we're required, Urban Renewal Authority is required to come to City Council to get approval for the Urban Renewal Authority to move forward with the process that it takes to create an urban renewal plan. So that's why we're here this evening, to see if council has interest in creating a new urban renewal area. The URA Board did approve this the other night to come forward to City Council. But as Steve said, we've received not more than just even this most recent interest that community development received. We've sat down with several developers over the years to develop areas within this planned urban renewal area, and it always came down to finances, why it never moved forward, because there's quite a bit of cleanup and infrastructure required to make anything feasible in this area. So I think this is an appropriate tool to bring forward for future redevelopment of the site. Right along the creek, I think this could be beneficial to clean up any environmental issues that may be impacting the creek, which we don't have funds to do anything with right now either. But Lauren, did you have anything you want to add based on the community development?
No, I think the only thing I'd add is that one of the reasons that I don't think we've seen a lot of development over there is because the encumbrance of the floodplain. So this would maybe give us more tools to improve the effects of the floodplain, which are not only on the industrial property, but that entire neighborhood in the Clearville area. It's, we have very limited industrially zoned land south of I-70. Most of the industrially zoned land is in the northwest quadrant, and it's an area that's sort of hidden from view. It's cul-de-sac, there's not any immediately adjacent neighbors, the neighborhood is immediately west of the boundary that Steve drew and then across the creek. We don't get a lot of complaints in the area, but if you drive down there, it could use a little love, and I think some of the urban renewal tools would give us the ability to do that.
If urban, if council does provide consensus this evening for us to move forward, we would anticipate the consultant that is currently doing the Lutheran Legacy Campus, that we would just expand their scope to include this new area, and we would most likely, if we can find the blighting factors and have agreement, that we will move forward with that, that we would bring both plans to you on the same evening and get those both passed at the same time.
Thank you. Questions of council? Mr. Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one Lauren just brought up, my first question was about the floodplain, so it sounds like generally there's possibility, it is in the floodplain, but potentially we can mitigate it.
Yes, there's, this area of the creek is part of the Clear Creek Master Plan that we're partnering with Mile High Flood District on. So we have a conceptual plan of what we could do to the bank to mitigate the properties within the urban renewal area and the neighborhood nearby.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pretty familiar with it, so my neighbors across the street, their house overlooks it, and when we're in their kitchen, we find it very entertaining to watch the trucks with the new truck drivers trying to get out of the parking lot. So I will, I will be sad to see that go, it is a form of entertainment. But one of the things that I know, because I use that Carr Street, that's my little secret ninja Costco access, it is a really constrained underpass, and actually, just in general, just the transportation infrastructure, accessing that site is like very, very constrained. It's tight, there's not a lot of room because there's this interstate next to it. So one thing I'm just sort of curious about is, you know, should this move forward and there's additional investment, would that be able to help enhance some of that access in that area?
It could. So currently, right now, the lines that we have drawn around there don't include Carr Street, nor do they include that underpass. Is that a city run? Is that, how does that work? Is Highway Alvada's half of it, CDOT's over it?
Yeah, I don't know about the underpass, but Carr Street is definitely Wheat Ridge, so, you know, it could be included.
We could include it. Traditionally, you don't include properties that's already developed because there's no increment that's going to flow up there because there's no new development going on there. But if we certainly feel that Carr Street is inadequate to serve whatever we're doing in there, we could certainly look at adding that area in there to improve Carr Street.
Yeah, so, I mean, I travel by car and by bike, and, I mean, it is really, it's not safe, it's really sharp turns and it's very tight. And so I think if we're going to be looking at any type of investment in that area, I think including being able to improve that, the connectivity from our city streets that exist now, and especially with that underpass there, it's one of only a few underpasses that serve our city, so I would, I would like to make sure that we're able to invest in safety and access at that intersection.
Councilmember, we'll look at that, including, and then we'll just increase the scope of what the plan area is. Again, I'll have to, I would want to talk with Maria, our Public Works Director, about the implications of can we even increase? I agree, I drive under that bridge often to get over to Costco, but-
Why are you guys shopping in Arvada?
We don't have one.
Why don't we have a Costco city manager?
We go there to see what other Wheat Ridge people are there. We just sit in the parking lot and take drivers' places.
You don't go for the hot dog?
The gas.
Yeah, it's a good point, Councilmember Hulteen, and, you know, one of the biggest reasons to form an urban renewal area, as Steve mentioned, is to improve public infrastructure. So, you know, if we expand the boundaries all the way over to Carr, that would expand it to include residential, which we typically don't do, but we might be able to figure out a way to expand just for the public infrastructure.
I think, I'm pretty sure that property right there at the southeast corner of 48, the Carr-
Yeah.
I think, I think that's like some sort of junkyard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that's a commercial property.
Yeah.
And that would be, that would be a property that, by acquiring some of that, would actually help with some of that access. So anyway, take a look at that, I think that would serve us in the long run, especially if there's improvements that are increasing the need to access it and then additional demand on the roads.
And maybe we can just draw a line and only include the street. As you start to include residential property, you send out a letter to them saying, you're blighted, which you may not be blighted, they don't like those words. So if we can just include the street, that may be the way we want.
Thank you. And thank you for working in cars on Carr. Any further discussion on this? Any questions? Counselor Ohm?
Yeah, just one, since we went down the safety road on Carr, I've had several concerns that I've told Patrick about. I'm less concerned about the horizontal. Look vertically sometime when you drive down Carr and look at those walls and the way that they're, a normal retaining wall is typically vertical. This is leaning towards the road, you can see the buckling of all the retaining walls. And then if you want another, I mean, it's just public knowledge, but you get, if you're coming back on the north side, you can see where the salt has deteriorated, appears to have deteriorated, the block walls to the rebar on the north side of that tunnel that we're talking about. And so my concerns are definitely going to be as we start looking at this redevelopment and adding more traffic. And I know we've had conversations with CDOT about these concerns. I still have concerns, but next time you go over there, you can see it, it's pretty obvious.
Okay. Further discussion? Staff is asking for consensus to move forward on the development of this new urban renewal area. Can I show, a show of hands? Okay, it looks like we have consensus on council to move forward. Anything else that you need for that? Okay.
And as Steve mentioned, that doesn't necessarily approve anything, but I'll have to come back for final approval with council, so.
Okay. Vacation well? Thank you. Okay, so that concludes both of our agenda items. We'll go back now to the agenda itself. We'll go to staff reports as soon as we have a break in the action.
Okay, sure. Am I next? Thank you.
Are you, you're the staff.
Sorry, sorry, yeah, we just, we have a couple of quick things. So Senators Hickel, Luper, and Bennett have sent out their congressionally, I can't remember what it is, congressionally directed spending request, they're due this Friday. As you all know, we got $4 million last year. So, yep, that was great for Wadsworth. So we sat down internally last week, I think, or two weeks ago, to talk about what we could potentially ask for this year, and we really did not identify any large capital projects like Wadsworth. The projects really have to be shovel-ready and ready to go. We have a lot of funding coming to us for capital projects, and if we go for a bond in November, we're going to have even more. We're getting a lot of Dr. Cog tip money. So we identified what we think is a great project is affordable housing. We talked a lot about this evening. You all adopted the affordable housing strategy a few, a couple of months ago, I guess, already? Was that December already? Has it been that long, January? And as you remember, one of the biggest recommendations in there was to create a housing fund, which we've done, actually hired some staff to manage a housing program, and use the fund, some of the funding for, to, as I think Rachel mentioned earlier, to maintain or retain, what's the right word, save our affordable reserve, yeah, our current affordable housing, or what we call NOAA, the Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing. Wheat Ridge has a lot of it, if you remember from the report. We think it's a really good opportunity to preserve what affordability we have today by upgrading some of those units. A lot of them are old, they need upgraded, they're not probably in the best shape, but in return, the city could provide money to some of those property owners. They do some upgrades, but they, they promise to keep the rents at a certain level. So we would love to, as one of our requests to the senators this year- So we would love to, as one of our requests to the senators this year is to ask for somewhere around $2 million, and Ally and I are still arm-wrestling over how much we ask for, to, for basically some seed money to put into this, our housing fund, to help rehab some of these properties in Wheat Ridge. And we just think, you know, it's, it's not just a Colorado issue, it's a national issue, we think it's something that our senators would think is, is important for our state. We already have an affordable housing strategy adopted, a recommendation, it's shovel-ready, if you will, so we would like to submit that for consideration by Friday. So just kind of want to make sure you're aware of that and are okay with that. The second application we may submit, we're still kind of working on it, is, Mary Ann, I think, has snuck out, hasn't she? Is to ask for about $200,000 for some money for our new Clear Creek Maker Space, to help them kind of get off the ground to, and maybe buy more equipment, rehab that building a bit. We think it's a kind of a really cool project that might have some favorability from our senators too. It's economic development driver, it's a job creator, I think it's a very unique project that they may like to fund, and it's, we're only asking for small amounts, so that would be the second application. I'm not sure if the chief is, the chief is looking at potentially a third application, we're looking at a new vehicle, command vehicle for our police department. What we have now is a bread truck, is what they call it. If you've seen it, it's, it's a very old piece of equipment, but we're looking at potentially a grant from UASI, we're not sure if we're going to get it yet, the grant wouldn't cover the full cost, we could potentially, as a third application or option, ask the senators for maybe $100,000 or something to cover the difference with that. So those are the three things we're looking at. Again, they're due this Friday, so short turnaround, but our number one priority is the housing fund request. So any thoughts or questions on that? And then when you all, we all go to DC, we can, applications are due this Friday, but it's perfect timing, we can, we can really, we can take more information out and talk it up. Yeah, yeah, Ally, you want to add something?
No, I was just going to say, Counselor, and we'll get you a different brochure to hand out, this trip, promoting, we'll just be talking up affordable housing and how important it is to Wheat Ridge, so.
Lauren, do you want to add anything to that? Lauren's staff is very integral in this, Jeff Hurt is kind of the lead on some of this, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, so we were talking about today, the story, I think we have, you all know the story, it's really unique, right? So our housing stock here in Wheat Ridge and the opportunity to preserve affordability, I think is really particularly unique to our community at this point in time, and I, and we hope that resonates with the powers that be, yeah.
All good with that? Oh, sure. Yeah, it's great.
So you can walk around with, just hold up the QR code, I love it. I'm just kidding. Counselor Ohm was very effective last year in just handing out brochures, so, yeah.
Corey, we'll, he can teach you.
Okay. So, and I think, Ally's got some?
Just, yeah, thank you, very quickly, you might recall, as part of the ARPA funding allocations that you all made last year, we put some money, we gave some money to Jefferson Center for Mental Health to do a number of things, increasing mental health awareness in our community, and one of the things, so Amanda Harrison, our awesome communication and engagement manager, has been working with them to put together a series for our residents to sign up for, and the dates are live, and we're promoting it now, and these are free classes, it'll be held at the rec center, starting on March 30th, Understanding Mental Health Signs, Symptoms, and Tools, so that was sort of the Mental Health 101, first aid, yeah, Mental Health 101, Five Dimensions of Wellness, and putting out the fire, Preventing and Managing Burnout. So you are also eligible to partake. Yeah, so anyway, we're, we're putting the ARPA money to really good use in helping build resiliency in our community, so this is all out there, it's free, there's registration, so please encourage. Oh, thank you, yes, we just heard that, it sounds like the Wheat Ridge High School has hired the clinician that we'll also be funding, thank you, through ARPA, so we're, it's all starting to come together, all of that, all of those, the ways that you, you chose to allocate the funding is really coming together, so, thanks.
Great, thank you. Elected officials' reports, anyone have anything tonight? Oh, we'll start with Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Jeffco Quarterly Breakfast with the mayor and Patrick, it's always really good to get a thorough understanding of what's going on in the county and having a few little chats with some of my other council members from different municipalities. And then, one thing I wanted to mention that is, is interesting, is I just noticed that there's now a national trash recycle company that has EV trucks that they're launching fleets of, which I find very interesting, that we're, we're to that age now, where, you know, they're very heavy vehicles, but that, that is, that is now something that is happening. And then, one last thing that I thought I'd bring a little humor, is that I saw that the National Park Savers issued a message that, "Don't push a slower friend down when running away from a bear," and I, I thought that was kind of, kind of funny. I've actually counted some greasy bears up Montana with a couple of friends, and you don't have to be the fastest, but, so, words of wisdom.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Counselor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the superintendent was supposed to be at Wheat Ridge High School tonight, she canceled, and they're looking at dates for later on. And then Counselor Weaver and I have our District 3 meeting this Saturday at the rec center at 9:00 AM, so hope to see everybody there, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Holteen?
I am not going to shut up about e-bikes tonight. So as I mentioned, the, you know, the governor's proposed budget might include 10 years' worth of e-bike rebates for all Coloradans. They are getting ready right now to launch statewide e-bike rebates from a bill from last year, and I just, you know, I'm an e-bike rider and an e-bike enthusiast, and I'm seeing a lot of e-bikes in our community, and I'm just mentioning that because, you know, we're getting ready to do a comprehensive plan, and we make a lot of decisions, things around e-bikes is, you know, just making sure they've got safe places to ride, but also be thinking about like the charging infrastructure that they need, especially in multifamily, and as we're talking about retaining our existing affordable housing, the cost burden of transportation is second to housing, and most Colorado households that are at 60% to 80% AMI cannot afford two cars. So as we are looking at spending our own dollars and hopefully the mona raining down from Congress, I'd really like us to be thinking about how those dollars are investing in transportation equity also, and making sure that, you know, like with the Caesar Chavez renovations, you know, making sure that parts of those renovations are ensuring that non-vehicular transportation is easily accessible, and that includes sidewalks that access transit, but also making sure there's bike storage and storage, safe storage, and charging for e-bikes. So just things for us to be thinking about holistically as we're looking at sustainability and affordability for our housing.
Do you think this program is going to drive up the cost of bikes, is that going to impact the?
Actually, it's not, you'd be surprised, Colorado, I've been meeting with e-bike retailers across the state for the last month, and it's, first of all, there's a lot of competition in, coming in here, you have to be a brick and mortar store in order to provide the rebate, and what, you'd be surprised how many people are actually coming to Colorado from surrounding states to purchase e-bikes, so there's just a flood of new products and new retailers. So the market's expanding, it's probably, the rebates are probably going to push the market just a little bit, but the rebates are going to kind of come in these chunks, and so the retailer is going to have to be able to work year-round when the rebates are there or not, so, so it's, it is going to be interesting, but 10 years' worth of e-bike rebates is going to be a pretty significant shift in our transportation system, so.
And this doesn't look like there's sort of income qualifications for the rebates?
Not for the ones the governor's proposing, there would be any, you do have to prove you're a Coloradan, it's, yeah, because it's, they're using taper funds for it, and you have to brick and mortar, and then there's some requirements around the types of e-bikes, both for responsible manufacturing to make sure that we're not selling junk that then just litters up landfills. But yeah, it'd be any Coloradan, and you don't have to be income-qualified for what the governor's, it hasn't gotten through the legislature yet, so May 5th, we'll check back in, but right now, what the governor's bringing forward is for every Coloradan.
Okay, well, we'll be looking for the Ferrari of electric bikes. Okay, additional matters by elected officials. Seeing none, let's see, next Saturday is the second Saturday of the month, I'll be hosting folks at Coffee with the Mayor at Vanola's Restaurant at 9 o'clock next Saturday, so, any other? Mr. Miller, you're an elected official, you okay? And our clerk.
Nothing new tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Any further business to come before us tonight? We will stand adjourned, thank you.